We're ready.
Okay, good morning. Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of November 10, 2021. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta?
Yeah.
Commissioner Santa Cruz? You're on mute, but he's here.
Here, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez is absent, and Chair Ketchum?
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, with support from Montes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. First, staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
For those attending the Zoom meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period, and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand and to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and you may begin speaking. So, right now, I do not see any hands raised, Chair, for items not on the agenda.
Thank you. Seeing no requests to speak, if there are no objections, we will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda, which this morning includes revised minutes of October 13, 2021, and a resolution concerning remote meetings under the Brown Act. May we have a motion to approve?
So moved that we accept the consent agenda?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
I wasn't there, so I will accept, I will exempt from that.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Chair Ketchum?
Hi.
Thank you.
Moving on now to the regular agenda, staff will introduce item number three.
Owner Abraham Fong, applicant Dan Barker, file number PLN 2020-00228, location 747 Lakeview Way in Emerald Lake Hills, and our project planner this morning is Olivia Boo.
Good morning, Commissioners, Director Monowitz, County Council, and members of the public. Olivia Boo, project planner, are here to present the project description, project compliance, and discuss the use permit exception.
Excuse me, Olivia, do you mind taking your mask off if you're by yourself? Because I can hardly hear what you were saying.
Sorry about that. And you can see the screen now?
Yes.
So the project is for a non-conforming use permit that also requires design review to legalize approximately 365 square feet of existing construction, and also to permit a new attached two-car garage of approximately 290 square feet to an existing two-story residence to create an attach for the attached new garage. The parcel is nonconforming at 6,288 square feet. Minimal grading, minimal grading is proposed and no trade-inable. Here's overall, Google view, the parcel is outlined in yellow for the project site. Lakeview Way is located at the corner of Lakeview Way and Vernal Way. And Lakeview Way is the street that, to the right of the parcel, that has that curve. Vernal Way, the front yard space is on Vernal Way. This is a, shows a diagram of the existing and proposed site plan. Legalizing the habitable space is outlined, captured in the orange outline, and then the proposed new two-car attached garage is proposed, is outlined in green. This is a diagram of the floor plan of both levels. As noted, area to be legalized is in the orange shade, and then the outline of red is what is determinative permitted, and then the gray area is the proposed attached 290 square foot garage. This is a side view of the left elevation with the corresponding outline in orange of the two-story, two-level habitable space. And then the green is, again, the proposed garage location of the, so the existing is on the left, and then the proposed elevation is on the right. This is a view of the rear of the property, which is looking directly towards the garage. It is proposed in a rear yard. And then to the right, in the diagram, the orange outline, I wanted to capture a rear view of where the habitable space is to be legalized. These are photos of the property. The rear elevation is on the left side for the proposed garage location, and then to the right here for the orange outline is the habitable space. This photo right here captures the left elevation. The orange is the habitable space to be legalized, and then to the left of this, of the space would be where the garage is proposed. For project conformity, the project complies with the visual quality of the general plan in terms of zoning. It complies with the residential hillside zoning district, which included design review, with the exception of lot coverage, floor error ratio, and minimum parcel size, of which the use permit regulation is part of this request. And there's complaints exempt in terms of environmental review. The design review, the design review committee reviewed the project on July 9, and it was recommended approval with two conditions, that the proposed garage door be modified to have windows to prevent a solid blank wall, and that the window patterns be aesthetically pleasing proportion, and for the color, proposed colors and materials to be consistent with those recommended in the standards, design review standards. For zoning conformance, the project does comply with the setbacks for what is being proposed. The, it is, the parcel is substandard in size at 6,288 square feet. The maximum lot coverage is, will be exceeding, and it already is exceeding as existing. And then to legalize the habitable space and to propose the garage, which is complying, is in effort to comply with required covered parking standards, that will, the request will further exceed what is allowable on the property. And then for the floor area, again, the same, it does already exceed the maximum floor area based in ratio to the size of the parcel, and it will further exceed. However, again, staff is recommending approval as it is, the applicant is making effort to comply with regulations in terms of legalizing what was work that was done by a prior, previous owner, and then to comply with parking. In terms of environmental review, the project is exempt qualifying under section 15301, class 1. And staff does, for the recommendation findings, request to approve the designer review permit and nonconforming use permit based on the conditions and findings in attachment A. That is the conclusion of my project, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have questions for staff? I'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Um, I just wanted to ask Olivia, regarding the maximum lot coverage, initially was 33 versus 25 permitted, but in the chart that, that Olivia, you presented, I noticed that 55, like 50, I think after this one.
Okay. For the floor area?
Yeah, that one. Okay, it says requirement is 30 versus proposed 51. What's the relationship with the 33 and 25 that you were referring to earlier?
For, in terms, is that referencing in terms of lot coverage, this number here, that is on the screen, that's 33%?
Okay, so one is lot coverage, 33 versus 30, and the other one is?
Floor area ratio, yeah. So the habitable, the floor area refers to all the habitable space on the property, inclusive, including all stories. And then the lot coverage is a different number. It regulates a bird's eye view of how much of her property is being covered. It doesn't take into account the multiple, all the levels.
Okay, so basically, the property is almost double in size? When it comes to, when it comes to the floor area ratio? Almost double in size? Okay. Okay, thank you, Olivia.
Yeah, it's about, yeah, it's 20% more of what is allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gupta, questions?
Um, yes, just, is there a design review officer's letter included in the report?
Um, no, but I have that available. I can pull that up. It, the letter was issued with that recommendation. Would you like?
Okay, so, so those recommendations from the letter have been included in the report? In the project report, is that correct? Right, okay. All right, and, okay, that question, I think, will come to the applicant later on. But was this home built when the regulations were different?
Yeah, so my understanding is, I believe, the residential hillside, the current regulations, I believe, came into effect around the late, I believe, late 70s. And this house was built, I have to bring up the staff report.
1948?
Thank you, I thought it was, I know, I was gonna say it's the 60s, but I think it was earlier than that, thank you.
Okay, so, so at that time, were these extra two bedrooms there?
So it's a little bit unclear. We did some research, both applicant and staff did research, and it's, it's not super clear on when the, the space came into, into existence. So, based on our research of all the records, we tried to do our best of trying to determine when those, that habitable space came, was existed.
Okay. Uh, do we know if they were kind of built at the same time, or those two came later?
It was, and as far as we, as far as staff is aware, it came, it came later.
Okay. Okay, um, that's all I have at this time. Thank you, Ms. Boo.
Okay, at this time, does the applicant wish to speak? You may have 15 minutes. Applicant owner, either or?
Uh, hi, Dan Barker, I'm the architect. And I, Olivia did a great job of summarizing. The, I'll just give a quick rundown of how the owner approached me and the intent of the project. He approached me shortly after they purchased the home, I think it was within a year, and simply looking for, to add some covered parking to their, their house, because there was no existing covered parking in the current structure. So we started looking through it in the design process, and during that process, it was uncovered that portions of the home may have been, weren't legalized. And so exhaustive search didn't resolve too much of our questions. There, you know, it's a little murky history on the house. The last permit I think we could find with the building department was from 85. And I tried to summarize it on our plans with a shaded line. But again, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to it. I will note that on that drawing, it did show a four-bedroom house, albeit all on the second floor, all bedrooms, and there was no floor plan of the lower floor. I, my assumption is the lower four floor was an existing garage and storage at some point. But I tried to best encapsulate on those plans what I thought the existing footprint of the house was. So it looks like they bumped out at some point without permit towards the uphill side, the rear side, as Olivia outlined with her yellow lines, where that bedroom is on the second floor, and potentially excavated a little bit more under the house. So at some point, a bedroom got moved downstairs, the bedrooms upstairs rearranged. But that's, more than that would be speculation. And so Olivia's discussed this in extent with the building department, and this is the resolution they've come to as far as the number of bedrooms and how to present this. But again, Abe, Mr. Fong is just looking to add a covered parking to his house and add a, you know, master bathroom internal to his current master bedroom upstairs with no additional addition. So that's how the project came about. And, yeah, I think that summarizes it. Abe, anything you want to add to the project?
Not really, I think, you know, thanks for that really nice summary. Thank you for, Olivia, for your presentation, and just thank you to the Commission for considering this. You know, this has actually been quite a long journey, I think about two years now, to try and get to this presentation. I think the pandemic really helped to slow things down, so I'm just grateful to be here now. But, you know, for me, I think, as Dan said, it's quite simple. We've been parking in our driveway for years now. Had some rat issues in the cars, and I think that, you know, we really inspired to try and get some covered parking to protect the cars, and just parking in this part of the, the hills is difficult as it is. There's, there's very little street parking, so that was the inspiration behind this whole project. We, we understand the, the exceptions that need to be granted, you know, as part of that, you know, we, as part of, in good faith, we would like to legalize, you know, all of the work that was done by the prior owner. And so, you know, we appreciate your, your consideration.
Okay, do Commissioners have questions for the applicant and architect? We'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
No questions.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
No questions.
Commissioner Gupta?
Just one question, how long has the applicant owned this property? Mr. Fong?
We're at about three and a half years now.
Three and a half years, okay. Was it ever considered to put the garage where the downstairs bedrooms, so that not to increase the covered area?
I, I think that is part of what we've done, right, Dan? We've tried to take part of the existing house, really to minimize the amount of extension that we're requesting.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little. We, I looked at, obviously, Mr. Fong and his family wouldn't, don't want to give up a bedroom if they didn't have to with what, you know, they thought they were purchasing with the home. I looked at what we could do as far as situating a new garage within the, the existing footprint, or as much in the existing footprint as we can, and based off of the setback lines due to Lakeview Way being determined to be a side yard. It, it, the distance between the setbacks actually gets quite narrow, and to get a full-depth garage in near where that downstairs bedroom, existing downstairs bedroom is, is quite tight, if not impossible. So that's what led me to need to turn the garage to face towards the north with the garage door, and swing a new driveway entrance around from the north side near the easement on the north. We did, even with that, it's, it's very tight between setback lines. I maximized the frontage of the garage between the setbacks, and even with that, we reclaimed what is the Fong's current laundry room and dedicated it towards the garage. So we are giving, we are taking over, I forgot the square footage, that we are converting from their existing house towards a garage, but I think the new footprint ends up being 290 square feet of addition, so we felt that was a good compromise and really the best location for the garage in the long run.
Okay, thank you for explaining that to me. No more questions.
Okay, we'll now have public comment on this item, and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhan.
If you, Chair, we're now opening public comment for item number three. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. You'll have two minutes. And if you're calling by phone, please press star nine to raise or unraise your hand. So once again, this is for item number three, and right now, let's give it a second. I don't see anybody at the moment for this item. No, Chair, there's no one.
Okay, seeing that no members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on the side is now closed. Let's move on now to Commissioner, comments and deliberation, and we'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
Oh, good morning. So biggest concerns are the exceptions, and ones being the FAR. The purpose of FAR really is the massing of the house, and the massing the house, to begin with, is very nicely done, and they incorporated the garage into it. It doesn't look any more massive with the addition. And the other part is lot coverage, and I, in my mind, most of that has been gutted by the state where we're turning single-family residents into duplexes and triplexes and ADUs and everything else, so it doesn't carry the weight that it did five years ago. And so these are neat, neither are great concerns. My, my, what I look for in something like this is, they tried successfully, to me, incorporating the garage into the design. They were willing to give up places that they already used in their house to get it in, and it's kind of refreshing to see that somebody actually wants a garage for a garage. And I'm willing to support that, so I'm, unless someone can convince me, my other fellow Commissioners can convince me, otherwise I'm going to support this.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
I am in agreement with Commissioner Hanson. I was a little bit concerned of the size percentage-wise of the maximum lot coverage, but seeing the diagram, it's not so much of a huge, humongous space noted, and I think they're trying to have carefully added and legalize the section that has not been legalized to make it more livable, and I, I am also inclined to support this project.
Commissioner Gupta?
Um, the, anybody wanting to add a get out garage to their property to make, make it, the word I'm looking for is, to, to make it a complete home? I, I think that's great, that's great, and it does look well-integrated into the rest of the house, because sometimes you see constructions or proposals that, that just kind of stick out. So, yes, it looks, it looks good to me. I think it's reasonably proportioned, even though, true, it's taking more in terms of floor area as well as the lot coverage of, of a home that, of a parcel that is nonconforming, so to say. Okay, so I am, I am in support of the project. I think it's a good design. Thank you.
I, I too support the project, and the comments stated previously, so may we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
Do we need to read the motion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe Olivia can put the motion up on the screen. Yep, right there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the Planning Commission approves the design review permit and nonconforming use permit for county file number PLN 2020-00228, based on and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
And I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Chair Ketchum?
Hi.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Moving on now to agenda item number four. Will staff please introduce the item?
And the item number four, owner Coastways Ranch Incorporated, applicant Charles N. Hudson, file number PLN 2020-00166, location 640 Cabrillo Highway, Pescadero. And our project planner this morning is Delaney. Delaney, go ahead.
Morning. I'm here today to present a request from Charles Hudson, representing Coastways Ranch Incorporated, to enter into a Williamson Act contract with the county. The subject parcel is 426.66 acres located in the unencumbered Pescadero area. The project is establishment and agricultural preserve and execution of a California land conservation, better known as the Williamson Act contract on the subject parcel. Currently, the parcel has 82.5 acres in irrigated agricultural production and another 21 acres in unirrigated pasture of the total parcel area. So the subject parcel, as you see, is straddles Cabrillo Highway, and has one section along the ocean side. It's on the southern tip of the county, so it borders Santa Cruz County on several sides. Parcel, as currently developed, has various agricultural structures. They were constructed in the early 1900s, so they're predated our zoning regulations. These include storage structures, garages, cabins, and now unusable structures that were previously used for agricultural purposes. The parcel is located approximately 10 miles north of Davenport. Most of the parcel, as I mentioned, east of Cabrillo Highway. So this is the current development on the parcel, so we sort of So this is the current development on the parcel. So we've sort of rotated a little bit. So the Cabrillo and the ocean are on the bottom of the page. We have the six fields here. The third field located as field three is the unirrigated pasture. The other five are the irrigated pastures used for various agricultural purposes. So as for the Williamson Act contract, eligible applicants will can enter into a contract with the county. They, in exchange, agree to comply with the uniform rules which limit non-agricultural uses. These are 10-year contracts which are rolling, meaning they renew every 10 years. Or rather, they renew every year for a new 10-year period. If the county or the applicant were to choose to enter non-renewal, that contract would be good for, again, 10 years until that period would end. In exchange, the property owner is granted a reduction in property taxes for these restrictions. So when we evaluated the parcel, we evaluated it based upon the requirements within the Williamson Act contract program. So it is compliant, for example, it, the zoning is either PAD, RM, or MCZ. The parcel is PAD and therefore in compliance. Parcel is also in compliance with the parcel size as well as the crop income. For the policy and regulation performance, the parcel is in conformance with the general plan. The agricultural preserve is consistent with its agricultural general plan designation. It's also compliant with the local coastal policies which encourage preservation of agricultural land. And the parcel is currently in conformance with our zoning regulations as the current development on the parcel predates our zoning regulations and there are no known zoning violations on the parcel. On March 8th, the project was brought to the agricultural advisory committee who unanimously recommended approval of the project, a recommended approval of the county enter into a Williamson Act contract with the parcel. For environmental review, the project is categorically exempt from the, from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guideline section 15317, which exempts open space contracts or easements. So this agricultural preserve would be exempt from CEQA. So staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the board of supervisors that you find the request to establish an agricultural preserve to be consistent with the general plan, planned agriculture district, coastal development district, California Land Conservation Act and the San Mateo County Land Conservation Act Uniform Rules and Procedures, and adopt a resolution to establish the subject property as an agricultural preserve and execute a California land conservation contract for the subject property. This concludes my presentation and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff? And we'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
Good morning. These contracts have been around for decades. Why was this land not originally under the, the act, Williamson Act?
So the applicant, the landowner, has to voluntarily request to enter into the program. The, perhaps the applicant could provide more information on why they have not previously entered into a contract, but they have to choose to enter into the program themselves.
Yeah, I understand that. And I just wonder, you know, it's always been to their advantage to do so. You know, what changed after all these decades? And that's my only real question. So.
If I may, Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
It, it's actually technically not true that it's always to the advantage of the landowner to enter into these contracts. It depends on their Prop 13 tax basis. And if the property has been under single ownership for a long period of time, the Williamson Act taxes might actually be higher than the Prop 13 basis. So it just, every, every property has a different calculation. And every property owner can kind of weigh the risks and benefits of choosing to have the Williamson Act calculation as opposed to the Prop 13 calculation.
Okay. I just was under an erroneous generous assumption. Thank you for the correction. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No question.
My question, more than question, the comment is that it looks like many properties or parcels under this Williamson Act have been kind of withdrawn or some, somewhere I read in the report over 200, over 200 such contracts have been either canceled or withdrawn. Is that, is that any kind of indication of owners moving away from agriculture?
Delaney, I'm happy to respond to that, given the history here. And I just wanted to thank Delaney first for her presentation. The commissioners may have not yet met Delaney. She's one of our great new planners who's come up from Santa Barbara County. So pleased to have her assistance. So the, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Gupta. The trend has been away from contracts. And the large number of non-renewals is, at least partly, I would say largely, a result of the county's response to an audit that the State Department of Conservation undertook of our Williamson Act program. I want to say close to 15 years ago. And in that audit, they identified that many contracted parcels were not being maintained in agricultural production. So as a result of the audit, we updated our program requirements and we undertook a fairly significant effort to non-renew parcels that were not being used for commercial agriculture. So, but you know, that has not necessarily prevented or precluded applications for new Williamson Act contracts, which we're actually happy to receive. The Williamson Act is the means by which the county can help agricultural landowners actually do agriculture. Zoning won't do it by itself. If zoning preserves land for agricultural use, but it doesn't require that the owner actually perform agricultural activity. So I'm familiar with Coastways Ranch. It's got a close place in my heart as a lover of the coastline here. It's an amazing place. And I personally experienced their agricultural operations. And I, I think it'd be a great addition to the Williamson Act program. So thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Director Monovit. So, yeah, I was just, it was more out of not knowing as much about it. Because even looks like state that used to partially fund the offset of the property tax, they stopped doing that, what I read in the report. So, okay.
Yeah, that's right. On that note, so the state used to compensate local governments for the reduction in property tax income that resulted from contracts. But that subsidy has long since disappeared. Nevertheless, the county and the board of supervisors decided it's in the interest of the county to continue with the program anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Interesting information, Steve. Thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak at this point? You have 15 minutes. Mr. Hudson.
Mr. Hudson, there's a microphone button that I think you need to click in order to unmute yourself.
Am I on now?
You're on now.
I was looking for the raise hand button. That's what I couldn't find. Just good morning, commissioners. I'm Charles Hudson, representing Coastways Ranch. And we appreciate the recommendations for approval from the agricultural advisory committee and from the state planning staff. I would respond to an earlier question about why we're, we haven't been in the, the ag preserve up until now. This property was purchased by my grandparents in, in 1917, so it's been in the family for over 100 years. And in 1989, it was, the, the property was incorporated. And the title of the property was put into, into the Subchapter S Corporation. And then the shareholders died and made gifts to their children and grandchildren. In about 2017, more than 50% of the original shares were transferred. And we were unaware that that was going to trigger a change of ownership, which should have been reported to the, to the Board of Equalization and ultimately to the county. And so we did that. And when that happened, the county reassessed our property. And our property taxes went up from about 4,000 a year to around 90,000 a year. And so we're looking for ways to, to reduce our property taxes. And that's why we're applying for the agricultural preserve now. Prior, prior to that reassessment, the property taxes were much more bearable. I guess that's would be the extent of what I would like to say right now. I'd be happy to respond to any questions, questions they have.
Okay, do commissioners have questions for Mr. Hudson? Start with Commissioner Hanson.
No questions.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Hudson, how much reduction on tax assessment would you expect it to gain as a result of this participation on the Williamson Act?
I have never received the figure for that amount. We originally were applying to put the entire ranch in the Williamson Act, but the two southerly parcels, which don't have any ag land on them, didn't, were allowed to be, become part of the application. And so it's, it's only the larger parcel that, that would be subject to a reduction in taxes. But I, I haven't been able to, haven't gotten the figure from that, from the officials office yet as to what that might be. I saw on the screen a little while ago that there was, was something that looked like it might provide that information, but I wasn't able to, to read it before it disappeared.
Yes, that's a challenging question to answer. And I, I think it's, the formula is quite difficult to understand. I don't know if Mr. Fox has anything more to say about that. No, yes, we, in our analysis of the updates to the program that we made in response to the audit, there was a lot of questions from landowners about, well, how exactly will this affect my taxes? And we had to refer them to the tax assessor and it was a complicated process to get that information. So it, it's hard to know. It's very case specific and depending on the assessors. So i- if Mr. Hudson expecting to get reduction initially from 4,000 to 90,000, and he doesn't know how much will cover the Williamson Act, it's like a shooting up in the air. See if he can get a deduct because he doesn't know how much he will be saving. If you're going through all these rigmarole for $1,000 reduction, I mean, it's such a waste of time for all of us in himself trying to do this process. I think it's fair to say that, given the circumstances that Mr. Hudson described, that it will be worth his while to enter into this contract or the family or the trusts worth of while. I think the tax savings can be substantial. As we noted, it depends on particular, yes, exactly. Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta.
No, I, I enjoyed reading all the things that are grown on this land. So that's, that's just a comment. Other than that, I have no questions. Thank you.
We'll now have public comment on this item and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhan.
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comment for item number four. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. I do see two people with their hands raised. I will first call on Rebecca Bauer and then followed by Jean, or Jeannie Gambino. And you'll have five, five minutes.
Excuse me. Hi, my name is Rebecca Bauer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Yes, so just, I mean, what my cousin referred to earlier, but my great-grandparents bought the property back in 1917 and it has been in our family ever since. Recently with the taxes going beyond what we can handle as a family, we're really hopeful that this will reduce it. So it's manageable and we can continue preserving the land for, for farmland and agriculture conditions on the coast. We appreciate the opportunity to speak before you and we really hope you'll support us in this goal to preserve it for our family, but also for all the families that have picked strawberries over the years and done the U-PIC. And we just want to continue the coastal traditions on the, for generations to come if we can. So thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comment. We now have Jean Gambino. Please accept this request. Unmute your mic and begin speaking.
Good morning. I hope everybody can hear me.
Yes.
My name is Jeannie Gambino and I'm one of the owners of Coastways Ranch. First, I would like to say thank you to the planning commissioners and county staff who have spent the time reviewing our application and making sure it was complete. I just wanted to encourage you to support our application and provide you with some history and my personal connection to the ranch. I grew up on the farm with my two sisters and we helped out at the farm stand on weekends and in the summer selling you pickle lolly blackberries, pumpkins, kiwis, and Christmas trees. In 2003, we started leasing the fields to Swanton Berry Farms and they started doing the U-PIC organic strawberries. I feel proud of the fact that our family has been part of allowing the public to come out for a day at the farm where they can go home with flats of berries or buckets of kiwis and bags of fresh artichokes. But with farming, it is always a struggle to make money. There's a lot of maintenance and upkeep involved in owning a place like Coastways Ranch. I feel like we have always been just scraping by. As my uncle said in 2017, after realizing that we had honestly just failed to notice that there'd been a transfer of 50% of the ownership of the property from grandparents to their kids and grandkids. We got hit with a reappraisal of the property and the taxes went way up. So not only do we have to contend with unaffordable taxes going forward, but we're getting hit with the adjustments for the previous 15 years, which is close to $1 million. I believe that including our farmland as an agricultural preserve is a benefit to San Mateo County. As far as I understand, it would have met the requirements for being in the Williamson Act for all the years that we are having to pay the increased back taxes as well. This is a bit of a deviation from the application in front of you, but if you know of any way that it could be applied retroactively, our whole family would be extremely grateful. I believe that as a family, we have been good stewards of the land and we hope that with help from the Williamson Act, we'll be able to continue preserving this land that means so much to so many of us, for future generations to enjoy. I appreciate your consideration of our application and for listening to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. And I don't see any further comments, Chair.
Okay, seeing that no additional members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed. Does staff wish to speak on any of the issues raised? I'd be interested on a, on the ish, idea of retroactive reduction, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, I am afraid the answer is likely no, but I'll refer that question to council.
I am not primarily a tax lawyer and there are others in my office that practice in this area. I would have to echo what Mr. Monowit said, that in general tax years, they can be appealed on the basis of an assessed value. If the value isn't properly assessed, there's a process for appealing that. But I, I'm not aware of a process by which we can retroactively say that we can treat this property as if it were under contract for those years when it wasn't. So I, I think that retroactively saying that So I, I think that retroactively saying that it's a Williamson Act contracted land is probably a dead end, but I don't have an opinion about whether or not there's another opportunity to challenge the assessed value.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to commissioner comments and deliberation and we'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
Yes, I support this application, having lived on a farm in Hafnum Bay for three years, where I bought everything at retail and sold it wholesale. It, it is just phenomenal that anybody can make a living at this. Be able to keep your family since nineteen seventeen is a testament of how well you've managed to land. I love, I love the area down there and and I, I wish to you to continue to do your efforts to keep the farmlands as such. So I will be supporting this application.
Mr. Santa Cruz.
I echo the same sentiments and I think having lands dedicated to agriculture or purpose is becoming a rare situation. And so I think I am in full support of this item.
Commissioner Gupta.
Well, in, in the past, we have approved other projects which are supporting agriculture and continuing to do agriculture on their properties, on their parcels. And I am in support of this project. I think, I think it would be great if they can continue doing this. Director Manovitz, as well as our council, has said that there's nothing that they, they see can be done to help them other than approving this project at this point. So I'm in support of this project.
I too am, am full support of recommending that the Board of Supervisors proceed with this. And so may we have a motion.
I have a motion. If I, Delaney can pass that, can move the screen to the recommendation, so I can read the recommendation. Oh, right there. That the Planning Commission recommend that the Board Supervisor find the request to establish an agricultural preserve to be consistent with the county general plan. Plan Agriculture District, Coastal Development District, the California Land Conservation Act and the San Mateo County Land Conservation Act Uniform Rules and Procedure. Number two, adopt a resolution to establish the subject property as a, as an agricultural preserve and execute a California Land Conservation Contract for the subject property.
I will second that.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Well, we move on now to item number five. Will staff please present the item?
Item number five, owner applicant Bell Air Heights LLC, file number PLN two zero zero two dash zero zero five one seven. Location, San Mateo Highlands and our project planner this morning is Camille Liam.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the project site is probably a site that you know. It's located at Bell Air and Ascension Drive. It's a conglomeration of parcels with a water tower in the middle. And just to refresh your memory, in the recent past, July twenty eight, twenty twenty, the Planning and Building Department issued the building permit with a grading hard card to allow Ascension Heights to begin grading operations. And then this, a revised grading schedule came to the Planning Commission a year ago for approval, which stated that grading would be complete by this past May, which was not the case due to delays. And the reasons cited by the applicant are COVID-related delays, including government closures and material shortages, as well as unanticipated site challenges as they were grading, which include rocky conditions, weather, including windy weather. Where grading must cease when the wind speed exceeds twenty-five miles per hour. It's a very, you know, it's at the top of the hill. It's a very windy site. And also there was additional time needed for additional stabilization work for the two slide areas on the property. So this is a, a plan that shows just the overall lay of the land. It's, it's an older landscape plan, but I chose it because the, it's simplified. There was a lot of detail on the civil plans. So in terms of phase one, that has been completed and phase one included the biosurveys, land clearing, mass grading for the road base, for the main access roads, as well as a major dirt off-haul. Also, phase two has been done, which included a mass grading for lots three through nineteen. There was grading that occurred all the way up to October seventh, which included slider repairs, fine grading, installation of utilities and other subdivision infrastructure. But that was halted by the Planning Department for the wet season until a wet season exception could be processed. And we wanted to update you that on October twenty-sixth, we did approve an interim wet season approval for only limited grading. And what the applicant was smart to suggest that they only do slope repair within the wet season area, as well as a retaining wall backfill. That was really urgent and I have pictures later on that I can show you. And this was based on the advice of the project geotechnical, as well as our own geotechnical section. So specifically what they are requesting for this wet season are to complete the slope repairs already underway for slide areas one, three and four, which are within two main areas of, of slope repair. They, the slope repair will not involve any off-haul or import of dirt. They plan to backfill in an already constructed retaining wall. It's already been poured. It's a concrete wall with drain rock and the area behind the wall was already excavated to, to accommodate the drain rock. But the drain rock was, needs to be imported via trucks onto the site. And that, I believe, has not been done yet due to wet conditions. So the gravel import is only for the retaining wall backfill. Trucks will be confined to ten-wheelers only. And it's estimated for a total of about five truckloads. I will let the applicant further describe that if you need more details. They estimate about approximately five to seven weeks for the slide repair, slope repair and the retaining wall backfill. So this is an area that's right, this, this picture on the top right is an area to the right of the main driveway off of Ascension. And the other slide repair area is around the bend on Ascension. As you can see, they're, they're working from the ground up. So they're moving up the hill with their, their slope repair. They're processing the materials onsite and compacting and laying down in layers and moving upwards. So you can imagine that stopping midway would be difficult as there would be this sort of unprotected bench that, that would probably be eroded by the rain. And they have since removed this loose debris at the bottom of the, of the area on the advice of our geotechnical section. This area left, to the top left, is also undergoing the same method for slope repair. They're moving upwards, processing the soil and compacting and, and eventually repairing this area that's left here. That, that's pretty large. The picture on the bottom right is the retaining wall that was already poured. There is a fence on top of it as well as some trees. So this could crumble if not backfilled. It, it's unsupported at this time. So staff found it to be reasonable to, for the applicant to request to backfill that with drain rock. Since the staff report was published, the applicant has brought to our attention that there is another retaining wall that they are requesting both to build and to backfill. There's the two main roads that go up to the top of the site. This is the driveway entrance here and this is the road leading up to the top of the site. And at that cross-section, there is a, basically they, they cut the, the toe of this slope as they were, as they were trying to build a retaining wall. They've already put down the forms for the cement pour. And I believe they've even shored the cut face, which is about six feet in height. So in order to properly support this during the wet season, it, it is reasonable that they would want to pour this wall, especially because it is in such a critical access area. And especially because the slopes on top of this area are so nicely graded. And they'd hate to lose that work to any crumbling of the slope. So I think that side. So in terms of overall grading, while there's limited grading allowed during the wet season, they are proposing to do the balance, the rest of the grading after the wet season, after April thirtieth. So after April thirtieth, they'll continue grading for phase two B, which includes the new, finishing the new entrance and all other retaining walls. Phase three, which includes and of lots five through eleven and a major dirt off-haul. I believe there's, there's a, there's a couple of major dirt off-hauls still, still left. They anticipate completing grading in September twenty twenty-two, which is before the next wet season a year from now. So we're hoping that they can really abide by that timeframe. And then, of course, the construction of houses will take place after September twenty-two and they are anticipating about a two-year timeframe for that, as they, they still need to submit the building permit applications for the new homes. So the grading operation details are included in the staff report. The applicant has agreed to measure, these are measures that are already in place and will be monitored by the county's mitigation monitor. Where grading will take place between eight and five on the weekdays and hauling will take place between nine and three to avoid conflict with school traffic. They'll use flagmen entering the site. The haul routes will be ten to fifteen, the trucks will be timed ten to fifteen minutes apart. There'll be dust and erosion control measures used on site, particularly the water trucks, which are used to spray water during grading to reduce the airborne dust, which will be honestly less of an issue. Hopefully, well, anyway, with, with proper management and proper monitoring, it has been an issue for the neighbors. There'll be limited use of rainbow drive to minimize try, damage and traffic hazard due to the narrow width of the road. And I'll show you, oops, I'll show you the route. It's not showing the full route on this view. So the, most of the operations are off-haul, meaning the trucks will come in empty over the green path, get filled with dirt and then off-haul full. The trucks will be full, leaving the site and will, and will exit not via the neighborhood way, but via the, I believe this ends up going to Hillsdale and to one oh one. Or is it ninety-two, ninety-two? Let's see. Let me go back to full screen. So other conditions that staff has placed on this revised grading schedule is that grading may occur only on the dry days. It should not occur within twenty-four hours after a rain event. The trucks, the haul trucks will be covered once leaving the site and arriving the site. Geotechnical engineer shall conduct weekly monitoring. The contractor shall provide daily street sweeping, cleaning. Grading work shall stop forty-eight hours prior to a predicted major rain event and the county will inspect after a major rain event prior to the restart of grading work. And we've included that inspection into the county's contract with the county, with the county mitigation monitor. So just to update you on the mitigation monitoring situation, the site was previously monitored by AES. Their contract is complete. So the county actually decided to go with SWCA for further monitoring of this project site. They will be starting this week monitoring. And the contact information of the mitigation monitors has been shared with both the applicant and the interested parties. And I'm not sure whether they changed the signage at the site, but we've requested that the applicant change the signage at the site to reflect the current monitors. So based on the staff recruitment's approval of the revised grading operations, including the limited wet season, limited grading, including slope repair and retaining wall backfill of retaining wall backfill of two retaining walls and the construction of the one retaining wall at the intersection of the two access roads onsite. So based on that, I conclude my presentation and if you have any further questions, I am available for responses.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for Camille? Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you for your presentation, Camille. That was very nicely summarized. Because there's a lot of information in the project report, which is, which was kind of hard to put my arms around, but thank you. So you said that since the report was put together, there's this additional retaining wall backfill that applicant has requested. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. Okay. So the retaining wall is there.
The retaining wall is not there. It's been formed, like where they put down the wood forms that would hold the concrete once it's poured in place, you know, forming a wall. So all those have been done, but it was, it was interrupted due to the wet season. It has been halt, you know, they, I, I believe that they're waiting for the, even though they do have interim approval. They, they have not, I believe they have not actually done it yet because.
No, yeah, from the pictures, it didn't appear that way, but, but that's a small picture, so. Okay. So is that what increases their timeframe from five weeks mode of work to maybe five to seven weeks?
No, yeah, it's really the wet, the wet conditions that are delaying things. Yes. They, they wanted to restart, like when we approved the interim approval, because we wanted to only give interim approval between October twenty-sixth and the date of this planning commission meeting to give the public a chance to, to sway in on it and the planning commission a chance to review it. So during that timeframe, they, they really weren't able to accomplish that much because of the wet conditions onsite. So they, you know, they do have to wait for the right conditions.
So, so they stopped, they, they are still continuing work, right?
As, as, as they can, yes, up until today, which is.
Up until today, right. But they had stopped it earlier in October, like on the seventh.
Yes.
Then, then they got this approval to continue.
Correct.
Until today.
That's correct.
Right, okay. So, yeah, I think that is a question for the applicant. Has, has county been? county been depending on these two agencies? I don't have their names in front of me, but the ones who were monitoring, who have been contracted to monitor the
Yes.
sites.
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah, we, we contracted with them directly and received reports regarding, like, you know, their, the results of their inspections.
Okay, yeah, that was my next question, that you get regular reports from them. So there's a lot in the GAN charts that they have here as to what all is going to take place in next several months. But other than this work, what else are they planning to do during the wet season?
Really, nothing else. They're not, they didn't propose to do anything further, nor are we necessarily, nor is that on the table for your review, because they were only, it's a very limited scope for the wet season for their work.
Okay. And again, going back to the the two or the agency who was doing the monitoring. We have received a lot of correspondence, I'm sure. The speakers will be there. They have sent so many pictures of kind of flooding slides, et cetera, in their backyards. Was, did their reports include that? Anything like that?
It occurred basically during a, there was a transition between the first mitigation monitor and the second mitigation monitor, and we, we got that rain, I think I want to say it was three weeks ago, very heavy rain. And you can see on this side where the site backs up to homes along Parrot. I believe this is where the flooding occurred. So there was a, this site area here had already been graded and already had erosion control measures on it. But a lot of the onsite drainage and drainage from this area, it it's just such a steep slope that muddy water did enter into the properties downslope on Parrot. And the applicant has sent us correspondence showing that they're working with the neighbors to address the damage to their properties directly. So it was, it was a very heavy, heavy rain, and the site is so steep and it would, it would, the level of disturbance so broad that, you know, erosion control measures are, are in reality only going to do so much, but I think it's our job as the county to ensure that they're putting as much as they can in terms of erosion control measures on the site to minimize any water, dirt polluted water runoff, as well as any flooding, like from velocity of of runoff to off-site properties. So we, you know, with, between the geotechnical engineer monitoring things, the county monitoring, we can try to minimize these impacts, but of course, you know, Mother Nature has its own ideas.
Okay, okay, yeah, I, I see your point. And one last question is these, the area one, three, and four that we talk about where the landslide is. No, please stay on this one.
Okay.
Where on this map is it?
Believe that this is a large, so the drive, I believe, is here. So there's a, there's a a slide repair area here, and I believe here, but I think the applicant has a better map. The applicant has a much better map of the area. Yeah, they, they have a presentation that that will be coming next that will actually go into more detail about that.
Okay, okay, that, that's fine. I'll wait for that. But where is the access road here? The access road we keep talking about?
It's better to see it on the
Map?
Yeah, this is, this is the main access road.
Right, right.
And this is, this is one slide area, and this is, there's a slide area here that's not being repaired this winter that there, that isn't as urgent, because it has not yet been started. It's just this area has been started and this area has been started, so. They, you know, those are the areas that are more urgent in terms of trying to complete those slide repair areas.
Yeah, it it gets a little confusing when these drawings are turned around.
Yeah, no, I agree. I I get a little turned around myself, even though I've been outside, it's just.
So I lose the orientation.
Me too.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for all your answers. Nothing further at this time.
Mr. Hanson.
Good morning. The HPL letter talks about unforeseen soil and geotechnical problems. Is that the new cut of the tow area? Or is that a different problem altogether?
I believe it had to do with the slide repair areas, that they just took longer than anticipated, and they're being, they're being monitored by the project geotech. So the project geotech, I believe, required additional mitigations that took longer than were previously anticipated. And I, their slide goes actually more into detail about that.
It's so.
The applicant, the applicant.
Let me, the applicant to describe what that is, but you, you don't have any knowledge of what the.
I, I only know things generally, but they, they, you know, they have the sort of the day-to-day, what, what might have delayed things.
And going forward, you know, we don't want the problems to reoccur with the sludge coming in people's backyards. Going forward with how our environment has changed, you know, what we, what I grew up with, I won't see again. Where now we'll get extended dry periods with intense rain periods. And you know, what we saw this year is what we're going to see more of in the future. And, you know, we just can't say, well, the, you know, these, these events are rare. Well, they're going to be coming every year now, multiple. So I just need, we just need to be prepared not to see this. Measures need to be thought of differently going forward, and what we did in the past, it aren't going to work. So I just wanted that up. The pictures you used, I thought were excellent to help me understand some of the problems that I had not seen before. So I appreciate all that. And I'll just let somebody else explain to me what these unforeseen geothings, when we were assured this was a really stable area. So, thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Sadakris.
I have a question. The, the part of the condition of approval is like the, they are requesting basically the wet season slope repair and retaining well. Would this type of project imply to continue grading during the wet season?
Only what's necessary for slope repair. There's a little bit of dirt involved in backfilling the tops of the retaining wall. So after they put in the drain rock, there's going to be a little bit of dirt on top of the drain rock, so they can plant those retaining walls. So that's really minor grading, but grading, earth movement is limited to the slope repair areas.
Okay, and that, in, in the, during the location, the, the location of these areas that has, is that located near Parrot, which is the, the the video that we get from the floating section of the project that neighboring houses?
No, I, I don't know. That area has already been, been completed. So it would just be this area here. Anyway, the, the, no, it wouldn't be Parrot. Parrot is, Parrot is relatively done. It's just a matter of maintaining erosion control measures in this area. It's just, it's just a constant maintenance that they have to be very diligent about.
So Camille, so Camille, you're saying that the Parrot section is already almost done? But isn't that where the video, the floating video came out with the, and I know granted that two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I have never seen water pouring the way it was, and I lived almost for forty years in California. But, but granted that that was unusual, unusually rain season or rain day, rainy day. If you say that section is already being repaired, how, how could it be repaired and then still facing this type of situation?
It, it's just rain coming down from the top of the hill and from that hill face. So you know, if it rains on a hill, and especially if the hill is particularly steep, it's, it's going to pick up speed, and especially if there's like a lot of rain, the volume and the speed of the rain did wash out some of the erosion control measures on that hill. And they were working to put in more erosion measures, more silt fences and things like that to better protect that hill from rain. But like I said, you know, the site is really steep. In some areas, the site abuts the street. In some areas, the site abuts private property. And unfortunately, where it abuts private property, when you do get heavy rainfall and and some amount of erosion, it goes into private properties, and it's also not, not desirable that it should go into the street, but those things have to be managed very, very closely. And, and it's just really just the topography and the proximity to the homes, but they, we do take that seriously, and the applicant is working with those owners.
Okay, thank you, Camille.
So I question the from the staff report. Okay, so the, the major part of that rainstorm was on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Now, the staff report says on October twenty-sixth, after confirmation that the site was adequately stabilized for winter, this interim approval was approved. So I don't, I don't know, and then there was this change of the inspector or something. I just don't understand how the, the day after this major storm, then there's, they're checking on the site stabilization. And this hill, yes, it is hard to keep all these areas straight, but so I am familiar with the homes along Parrot and that steep hill above them. And so obviously, in any heavy rain, any year, water would have to come down that hill into their yards. And so I'm curious to know whether that has been clean water that washed down the hill before, and now it's full of sediment. That is the difference. Because they must be familiar with the dynamic of this huge, steep slope above them of runoff. And then in spite of all their protestations, this project was approved to grade all that, and I just.
Well, site is highly disturbed. It was, that area was graded earlier, and then there was erosion control measures applied, but it's never going to be as good as, you know, this vegetation that you saw in early, you know, prior to project work in terms of holding back dirt.
So I could see how these people at the bottom of the hill were very concerned about this project. I mean, I was concerned, but I don't live down there. And yet, and yet it was approved, that, oh, here's this engineering feat we can do, and it'll all be great. And I, I don't know, I guess some reexamination. I'm sorry, this, I'm veering off into comments.
No, I completely understand what your comment is, and what happened is when we halted the work on October seventh, so well before the heavy rains, we with them constantly to put on erosion control measures, correcting and re-correcting the site, just monitoring and adjusting as needed. So by the time that we approved the interim slope repair work, the erosion control measures were pretty much a hundred percent. Of course, things will need to be adjusted based on weather conditions and wind conditions. But the applicant has shown a lot of diligence in, in working with us over those many days to apply the erosion control. And there, there was damage from the, the, the large rain event, which they were demonstrating that they were working with the applicants on. I mean, not the applicants, the neighbors. And, and it did, actually, they did actually underscore the urgency of completing those slope repair areas. So they're, they're not touching random areas of site. It's a very focused slope repair work in areas that are already benched and would, would not weather the wet, the full wet season well. And we're, you know, on the advice of the project CEO and county's CEO, it's better just to repair that slope so that it's smooth and, and button up the site for the rest of the wet season.
There was no plan when they graded that slope above the Parrot Drive homes to put in some revegetation with, with the burlap or something. There's nothing growing there.
There's nothing growing there, but there is a lot of erosion control measures, and I'll let the applicant describe specifically. I believe they, they've put on some new silt fences recently in response to that event.
And you, you had mentioned also that some of that washed down the hill.
Yep, yeah, that, yes, it, it, you know, some of it didn't hold up as well as it, as it, as they might have liked.
Okay, so let's move on now to the applicant who wished to speak. You have fifteen minutes.
Camille, so I see the applicant Bel Air Heights LLC on, oh, it may be, it's Jim Toby. Is it Jim Toby?
Yes.
Okay, hold on just a second. Should be joining us soon.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Jim Toby. I'm the project civil engineer. I have a presentation I'd like to show you, and I'm going to try to share my screen here, so give me one second.
Let me go ahead and turn off my timer. I'll put it to the side, but that way you can share. Hold on a second. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, great. Good morning, everybody. Again, my name is Jim Toby. I appreciate your time here today. Commissioners and Camille, thank you so much for your presentation. It's been pleasure working with you on this project for so long now. I'm sure you guys have all seen me before. I'm the project civil engineer. I've actually been involved this project since two thousand and one. So I know the site very, very well. I've been working on it for quite some time. And given the size and constraints of the project, we are making progress on this, and I appreciate your time today. My intention here is to kind of go over where we're at with things and kind of give you an overview of what we're going to be doing. So what I'd like to do is just start off with going through some of the project, giving you kind of an update. So over the, the recent year and a half that we've been working on this project right now, we have made major project on the site. Has been a challenge, given the rains, given the second constraints and everything. But we have made major project, and I'm going to go through some of this with you. We do have more to go, obviously, to, to finish this. But with the exception of the small areas around the retaining walls and the urgent slope repair underway, all grading is going to stop for the year. So we're really hitting here to concentrate on just some key areas that are just really important to keep going on, so they don't create a worse hazard later on. And for the rest of the, rest of the winter season, we're going to stop all, we're all grading operations. So what I want to review with you guys today a little bit is the progress we've made to date, the work we're proposing to work on during the rainy season, the schedule, work we want to finalize next summer, and our commitment to erosion control and stormwater quality for the project. So, as you can see here, first and foremost, we want to provide you some of the work we have done so far. We were, working with the project team, I'm the project stormwater equality specialist, and what's called the stormwater pollution prevention plan developer. And I've been working with the contractor and applicant for as long as this country, this project has gone on to help make this project as robust of a, of a size as it can. Obviously, we had a very significant rain recently. Our best efforts were to try to make the site as stabilized as possible. We, we just simply got overrun by some of the rain, we weren't inspecting in some of the areas we have, but we're working with them to double up our efforts and actually triple up our efforts to make sure the site is as well and as stabilized as we possibly can. So the pictures you see in front of you today are just some of the examples of what we've done. The picture on the left is actually the main roadway that goes from Bel Air Drive all the way up to the water tower. That is stabilized, that, that, what you see here is literally straw on the ground. That is there to absorb some of the uh, impact of the rain and keep the silt and soil that's underneath it in place. They've actually done a tremendous job. Um, I can honestly say, in working as a civil engineer for twenty five years, they're going above me on, they really are going, and it may, maybe daunting. It may seem like there's a lot going on, but they really have gone above me on to try to stabilize the site. The picture on the right is what we call hydroseeding, and that is truly just grass growing to the hillside. Um, they've taken the areas where we've gone ahead and finalized our grading. Those are the areas that are all done, we're not gonna be pulling bulldozers on them anymore. And we put down jute netting and other erosion control measures and planted it. We actually have a sprayer gun that sprays a seed mixture on the hillside. And this is a picture actually from a couple of weeks ago, and I know now it's even greener because it's been raining so much. So you can even see the, the little um, watering spickets here. There were, we, prior to the rainy, rain really taking off, we were trying to get the vegetation to really take off. And now it has, and that's what's protecting most of the hillside. So to give you an idea of what we've, what's been done to date, the, the vast majority of the site actually has most of its grading accomplished. So these green areas you see right here, you can see encompass a large area of what has already been done. So this is Bel Air right here on the side, Ascension, and at the top of our screen is Parrot Drive houses. And most of this area right here has been completed and it was had jute netting, it did have straw rolls and, and silt fences all along here to try to protect neighbors there. We simply just had a, such as a large storm that it overrun our, our best efforts. Since that time, I've worked with the applicants and the contractor and we've tripled our efforts. We've robot, we've put sit, some very robust rotational measures on the side to prevent this from happening again. We, we're very sensitive to what's been going on with the neighbors and I know the contractor is working diligently. Not only to clean it up, but to prevent it happening again. So this is a good idea, a picture of where we're at in the site, you can see the green and the grass growing through and the majority of the sites. We're, we're, we're really moving forward, you know, we would, we had hoped to be done with grading by now, but for a lot of unforeseen circumstances, I'll go into. This is where we're at right now, but I really do think that this project is moving along in the right direction. And again, we're not here to ask for anything more than to try to stabilize what we think is crucial, critical for the rainy season and then pick up that where we left off next summer. So the retaining walls, we were talking about earlier, the additional one, this is that wall right here. This is where the road comes up, it splits two ways. So we actually have the two roads that are on the project that one road is going this way and one road is going this way. So the road, the retaining wall that we were talking about earlier, Camille was mentioning, this is this one right here, those, that wall is actually has a six foot vertical cut that's already there. And all these walls are supported on a pier, concrete pier is drilled into the ground. That wall has con, the pier has concrete and steel in it. That portion is done and the work to be done next is to simply finish the wall in terms of the, the actual wall you will see and of, above ground, finish putting the rebar up, finish putting the, the um, concrete in place and then we will backfill it with the gravel and the dirt we're talking about right here. So obviously during rainy season, our goal is just to not leave this six foot vertical face there that could cause erosion issue. It could slough down, it could actually damage the grading work that's sort of been accomplished right here. So we're trying to do the absolute minimum required just to keep us through winter time. We're not trying to go beyond that right now. We're very sensitive to the grading and want to do the least amount just to stabilize the site. So as we talked about, the, the, we, we have two major slide areas, which I'm gonna give you a little more context on in a minute. And it's both the, the, the project geotechnical engineer who's actually on this presentation day and is available to answer questions. Um, as well as our projects council, Mark Hayes Loop is on the call, available for a comment too. Um, but I want to point out this one sentence that the geotechnical engineer in their letter had written to the county. In our opinion, it is essential that repair work continue through, continue on the project, both um, the, for the, my apologies, my phone just went off. In our opinion, it is essential that repair work continue on the, to the project, both the subject property as well as the neighbor's property, prop, properties, roads and um, properties. So what the, what the geotechnical is saying here is that for just the safety of the um, project, there are two key areas aside from the retaining walls that need to be kept going. Otherwise, it could lead to some other issues of erosion and problems of the project going forward. So the only thing we're gonna continue to work on besides the grading though, is that the plan will start working on utility installation throughout the winter time. However, that's already allowed by county and that's not what we're here for, asking for. That's something that's already allowed. We're not asking for any exception for that. So let me explain to you guys a little bit about the areas we're talking about here. So there are two main areas. The first one is on Ascension and that's what this area picture you see right here is. This is an area where we're not doing any work for the proposed subdivision. This is these, this is an area that just had historic erosion. Um, I want to point out, there's a big difference between a landslide and erosion. A landslide is deep rooted and yes, we've been talking about how all along on this project, how this rock, the, the soils and the rock and everything are very hard and very stable. That is still the case. Um, what we're seeing here is surface erosion, that's the upper, you know, few feet of soil that is more loose and is not as hard as the rock below it. And that was what over many decades, the rain has just washed away and created these rills and gullies that you see today. So the whole point of this erosion control or this surface slope repair we're talking about is the repair that, that erosion that has taken place over many decades. We're just trying to get to a point where that is now no longer to be a problem for the community and it, it'll stabilize this hillside, so you don't have that problem anymore. What we've done though is that that prod, process has basically come about halfway up the hill. You can see here where my cursor is, this is kind of that erosion and willing that historically has always been on that hillside and encompasses just a few feet above the harder rock that's below. That's what's being co, um, repaired. To do that, what we do is we literally dig into the hillside more than we need to and we do what's called a key benching. And what that means is that we go down a little farther and we create a area below that slide that basically lets you put some new dirt in there, gets compacted very well and locks everything into place. So our goal is to basically build this up. They do it in layers. You put down six inches of dirt and you run a compactor over it. You put down six four inches of dirt and you run a compactor over it. And they, they use those compactors, that's what this machine right here is, right here. It is a heavy machine, it vibrates, it compacts that dirt so that as, you know, going forward in the decades going forward, that soil is not going anywhere. And that's the point we're trying to get across right now is we're trying to repair this. All the dirt that we're using to repair this is coming from onsite. We're going, we're not, and we're not importing or exporting any material during this time period. We're simply continuing to build this up to the point where this surface erosion of this, these reels and problems we've had in the past are no longer an issue. Um, again, if you want more technical information, the project geotechnical engineer would be glad to describe a little bit more of that. But we're trying to get to the point where we don't have these more vertical slopes and these problem, problem areas going forward. The other area we have is more on Bel Air and more towards the entrance. That's this area you saw a slide earlier. They're, they're saying slope, slope area is three and four, but it's really one combined area. This is also an area we're trying to bring up. And again, this is, this is more, a more current picture of what's going on. You can see right here, this is actually br, um, burlap this on the side of the hillside. That's what's helping with the erosion control. It's all rose, there's been many measures that have taken place since that point in time to secure this whole side. And they're about halfway up the hill. You can see here, leaving this vertical face right here just could cause more erosion problems throughout winter time. If we just, just don't continue to continue up that hill and fix that once and for all. That's what we're asking for. So the, the one area I know everybody knows very well, the corner of Ascension and Bel Air, you look at that corner and you see this valley gutter literally sticking up in the air. Obviously, this is a valley gutter that was placed there probably when the subdivision was put in many, many decades ago. And over time, some of that surface erosion has washed away some of the dirt. This is an area we haven't started yet, but since it's been there historically for so many decades, we feel it's, it's safe to leave there throughout this final uh, winter season and we'll pick that work up next summer.
Toby, you have two minutes left.
Okay, I'll keep moving along. So I want to tell you a little bit about scheduling. So with the projects, project, any scheduling is always key. So there are a number of circumstances have delayed our project going forward. First of all, obviously COVID nineteen has given us a delay, both in terms of project shutdown for a little while, we had pro, delays in review, some of the things been reviewed for the county when the county was shut down and also labor and material shortages. Um, we also are very limited on the times we can work for off-haul. That's, that's no longer a problem for right now, but what has really been a main condition is the site has been required to shut down whenever the grading exceeds twenty five miles an hour. That resulted in thirty two days of delays, workdays, you know, five days a week we can work. So thirty two days really set us back, you can imagine. So we're working with that. The other problem we had is that during the entire project, we need to work around Cal Waters access to that water site all the time. So regardless of the work we need to do, we need to keep that, that water tank access open. So um, the areas we're not, also on top of that, these areas ended up being a little more complicated than the geotechnical engineer initially anticipated. Once you get out to the site, you realize that, you know, start digging down, some of the conditions underground can be a little different. And that's what the geotechnical engineer realized and asked them to do some additional work on that thing. So we're asking for about five to seven more weeks to finish these projects up. Of course, this really depends on weather and how wet the soil is. We've had permission since beginning of November to keep moving, we actually hasn't, have not done anything because it's been so wet. So that's something we just need to keep in mind. Same with the retaining wall work. We're just trying to do that, we're trying, we're anticipating a little bit more time to get this done, but that's all based on weather delays. So um, we're trying to work for the rest of the project moving next spring. The final grading will take place next spring, that'll include all the rest of the lots we've talked about. Um, we're gonna be, a lot of the work we're still working on, on the back of the property is pending um, Cal Water and installation of the new water main. Um, and then we'll move on to fixing the erosion control measures, the final off-haul material. And then we'll be working on the final utility work and then begin on the road and sidewalk paving. So as I said, we're committed to, the Ascension Heights is basically committed to doing everything we can. We're continuing on the erosion control work. Due date, the contractor spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on erosion control measures and continue to do so. Um, there'll be ongoing inspections by myself, the project civil engineer, as well as the, the county appointed inspector. So again, we're here to work with everybody. We really want this to be a successful project. We're doing all we can and we're hoping that when this project's all done and everything's all this headache of all this grading, everything's done, the session size project will be a great addition to the community. With that, I want to thank everybody and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
You're in mute commissioner.
Very sorry, missed the whole thing. Thank you, Mr. Toby. We'll have uh, questions from commissioners now, starting with Commissioner Gupta.
Um, Mr. Toby, uh, my question is what, first the comment that yes, it appears we, we have to uh, take care of uh, the slope prepared as when, well as both retaining wall backfills, that's a given. But it appears that that alone is not taking care of managing all these uh, you can call it erosion, we can call it landslides. Um, how, how are you uh, my question really is, how are you uh, looking ahead to make sure we do not face these problems that neighbors are facing? And I'm sure that uh, this, uh, because of erosion, this uh, topsoil or mud comes out on the streets as well. Because there are, I think there are two streets on the two sides, correct?
Yes.
Ascension Heights and Bel Air.
Yes.
Right. So how are you um, looking ahead? And how often are you there to look, to see what's going on?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking. Um, first and foremost, aside from what we're asking for today to continue the slide repairs and everything like that, there is an ongoing effort constantly for erosion control. Um, I can tell you firsthand, the contractor has been out there every single day. He was even out there three in the morning during one of the rain events when it was just coming down, taking care of whatever they can take care of. Um, it is a challenging site. I'm not gonna be, there's no, no doubt about it. It's, it's a very challenging site. It's a very large site. It's a very steep site. Our goal is to, to basically handle as much of this erosion we can. So a couple of things we're doing is we're all the, the vast majority of the exposed areas are covered. We've worked with them and come up with all kinds of ways to, okay, where are we at today? Let's figure out how we can make this all work. Where, you know, then we have a rain happens, we see what's working, what's not working, we come back tomorrow. Let's make this robust over here, let's move this thing over here. Um, I just personally have been in sight, so the way I work, I'm one of the principals of the firm, so I'm usually only out there uh, right before and right after a major storm event. However, I have my staff who are highly trained staff who are out there on, the, the, the rule basically is I have to have my staff out there once a week through the, the entire construction process. They have to be out there every um, forty eight hours before predicted rain event, every single day during the rain event and forty eight hours after a rain event. Every time we're out there, we're expecting to see what happens. We're looking to see if the original measures we recommended and the contractor has put down, are they working? Do we need to add more? Do we need to do anything different? What's working, what's not working? And we're continuously updating that. The area on Parrot, that was an area that we honestly, we put down a number of erosion control measures and had it a very robust. We just frankly had a storm of storms. We, we, there was some, it was overrun by just the amount of water. What, what we're seeing here is not the water we, the water that's going into those yards has always gone into those yards. When the project's done, there's gonna be storm drains and everything to capture that water and direct it away. However, during this time we're under construction, we have a number of erosion control measures. So what we're trying to do is keep when it rains and then we got a bare job site like this, a lot of times it'll pick up some of the loose dirt and that's what you're seeing ended up into the neighbor's yards. We had a number of erosion control measures up. Since that happened, we've tripled the amount of erosion control measures we've put in place to try to curb that from happening again. And the contractor has been working with the neighbors, trying to make sure, first clean it up and trying to do everything they can to make sure it doesn't happen again. So, and that's in addition to the county inspector that's out here. So we've got number of people trying everything we can and using, you know, decades of experience trying to, trying to control this. And I'll be honest with you, we just had a storm in the middle of October that nobody has ever seen before. And granted, we realize that's, that's the way that, you know, our world is moving towards and we're constantly updating our, our recommendations and everything we're doing to keep that from happening again.
Uh, that, that, yeah, no, I, I've heard many times that it's a challenging site, but that we knew from day one, right? That it's a challenging site. Uh, and like Commissioner Hanson said, what worked in the past may not work going forward. So uh, and, and you, you are the guys who are the experts in that area, how to manage these things. And uh, I hope you are looking at something more than what you have done in the past. Just tripling the efforts alone, don't always do it. So you have to be looking at it from outside to see what can be done better. Uh, because these neighbors, they are not done yet. Your project, you said it will take another two years after the other work is done um, in a year's time. So and we are talking about another three years and they have to live through this agony for another three years. And after that, there may still be tweaks required, like you said, for drainage, putting the drainage so that uh, water doesn't go into their backyard or mud doesn't go into their backyard. So I, I just want to emphasize that, that you really need to uh, be on top of it. Um, if it takes somebody from your staff coming out there every day, then so be it. Um, so that's, that's my big concern here. Uh, yes, this um, slope repair and reta, retaining wall backfills, yes, that emergency repair has to be done. But it doesn't look like uh, the erosion is managed. Because even some of the pictures that I see, I don't see any. Because even some of the pictures that I see, I don't see any cover on top of those areas which are kind of uh, eroding. So so thi- this is what my comments are. And I may have further questions, but this is where um, this is all I have right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Morning, Tony. Um, in your letter, it mentions, you know, unforeseen soil and geotechnical problems. Specifically, what is that?
If the geotechnical engineer is here, which he's supposed to be, I would love to have him answer that question, actually.
Sorry, um, who's the person?
Joe Michelucci.
Let me take a look. Just a second while I move over. There he is. Joe, can you hear us?
Hello.
Hello.
Can can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yeah, I'm Joe Michelucci. I'm the project geotechnical engineer. And I've been involved with this project for more than two decades and I I really don't think that there are many unforeseen conditions at the site. We knew there were erosion gullies. We knew that there was hard rock and I think we've encountered just about what we thought we would encounter. Now, as far as the erosion gully.
That was a direct quote from the letter.
I I didn't write that letter, but um, um, I think the erosion gullies um, may be a little bit repairs may have incorporated a little bit wider area, a little bit deeper. But um, the integrity of the repair will not be compromised at all. In fact, the repair will be better than it would have been if it was of a lesser extent. So um, I think that we've encountered at the site what we expected.
Okay, so when uh, so Louis Lyon wrote the letter. Yeah, this led
I think that the difference might be the fact that we're we like like Joe had mentioned. The repair has been deeper and wider and just been more extensive than we originally anticipated. We knew we were going to repair these areas. They just ended up being larger and wider and have taken more time than anticipated.
Okay, so.
And in fact, it's it'll end up being a better repair than if it was uh, not as wide.
Okay, yeah, because when grading areas are opened up, a lot of unforeseen soil and geotechnical conditions are discovered.
I disagree with.
The delays, yada, yada, you know, and I was just, okay, so we've we've got what you're saying is really a semantics problem, not a not a geologic problem.
No, I think what we've got at the site is what we expected. And again, as I've been saying throughout the years, it's a very hard rock site. And um, we encountered hard rock over most of the project. And um, the contractor that did the the filling uh, and the excavating did a really, really good job and the contractor that is doing the erosion repairs is doing excellent work. So we're we're very happy and we've got a representative out at the site on a daily basis when when work is going on. Uh, supplying me with memos and 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 whatnot and in we we think that everything is going really well right now.
Okay, uh, you've answered my questions and that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Um, no question at this time.
Okay, uh, now we'll have public comment on this item and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Lukan.
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comment for item number five. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. If you're calling by phone, I think I saw a caller by phone earlier, compress star nine to raise and unraise your hand. Um, let's see, I'll keep give a couple of seconds. I know I see two hands raised at the moment, um, but go ahead and raise your hand now. The first hand I will call on is from Mr. Donald Nagel, followed by Tom Leong. Mr. Nagel, please accept his invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Thank you, Janet. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Chair Ketchum, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I have three comments. First, I sent an email to you on behalf of the two HOAs directly adjacent to the site in which we listed thirteen separate topics related to the package that staff shared as pre-reading. I'm not going to walk through those now as we don't have the time. We do request as our HOAs, however, that you in turn request clarification for any of those issues or questions that may resonate with you and that you request them of staff. Second, I have to correct several things that have been said about erosion control and the flooding on Parrot properties. There is no erosion control. I just went outside now and took another picture. No erosion control directly behind two of the Parrot homes. Um, other than a silt fence that was added after the rain event. It's a distance of eighty to a hundred feet. I can't believe any of the people have said that it's in place there have literally walked that side of the hill because it's just not there. It is there. When the rain came down, while the volume was large, what happened was rivulets became deeper and deeper and deeper. There is no jute, there's no hay, there were no silt fences, there's nothing. After the rain event, they came and installed about a hundred linear feet of silt fencing that did not even exist before the rain event. Now, behind two of the homes, there was some erosion control that got within fifteen feet of the fences. But the final fifteen feet had and still does not have any erosion control. We question if the diligence was so fantastic on the other ninety percent of the hill, how did they ignore the only part of the hill adjacent to Parrot? It makes us very concerned that they just don't care. And we ask you to be very, very circumspect in what you allow. Finally, the two main items you're being asked for today. I was very pleased with what Ms. Leon shared. The scoping five to seven weeks, the erosion repairs in the three specific areas, her photos and Mr. Toby's were excellent. As a neighborhood, we're okay with what was described in the summary. We would like those three repairs to continue. We're okay with the retaining wall backfill near the site. We're even okay with the toe retaining wall. Those clearly logically must be done. What we're not okay with is that deeply embedded in the minutia of the report, which you you may have missed, referred to for ten seconds by Mr. Toby and in one line in their council's letter in the package, they have a significant amount of work, it appears to us, they plan to do all week, every week during the rainy season. While there are acronyms in the project plan, they appear to be requesting to do digging and installation of a storm drain across the entire site, a sewer system across the entire site, new water main lines up and around the entire site and other significant activities. Right now, as I speak, they have thirty to forty very large precast concrete structures on a shelf directly above Parrot. You cannot see from Bel Air. You have to come into our yards to see or see from the College of San Mateo. Um, and so people may be unaware those are there. We're now confused. Is the developer proposing this major work also in addition to the grading? If so, as a neighborhood, we are strongly against this, given what the evidence that we've seen. The compromises made for this controversial project back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen to bring the project forward included limited winter rainy season work. The current developer was not part of that work, although some of their team is still represented. If what they're trying to do now is play a word game and parse the precise language of that compromise and argue that only grading, whatever that means, is ruled out and nearly under any other construction activity, no matter how major would be allowed. We strongly believe that that goes against the spirit of what was agreed five to six years ago. And given the issues we've experienced and their lack of even basic erosion control behind Parrot, which again, you could go see right now and is in the photos we sent yesterday. Please clarify if they're asking for this also and please strongly reject this work. If what is allowed to proceed is limited to what Ms. Leon shared, the five to seven weeks, the very specific things in her slide and nothing else, then the neighborhood is pleased and you will hear no complaints with us as long as the erosion control is improved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel. I will now call on um, on Tom Leong. Please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hi, Commissioners. Um, I am Tom Luang and I do live on um, Parrot Drive. I just want to comment on the flooding that happened during the big rainy season. I've lived here since two thousand and eleven and um, I never had flooding in my backyard ever uh, until this year. And I know we have had um, big rainstorms in the past few years before. So I just want to clarify that um, this doesn't happen all the time. Uh, this is the first time it ever happened in my backyard. And uh, as you saw, I've seen that the some of the pictures in the street, there was a lot of dirt running um, uh, down the street uh, on this side of the road, right? So um, I just want to clear this up. This is the first time. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Um, I will next call on Laurel Nagel. Please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So um, like my husband said, we don't want to necessarily stop the project, but kind of hoped it had been farther along. But we really feel like we haven't been heard, respected, protected by the county and by our oversight liaison who actually lived in Sacramento and called in and did reports. Everything we've talked about, even the stuff before the storm, we testified to that it would happen and, you know, it was all, well, 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 it won't happen. Um, I have to argue with Jim Toby about this was not a storm we'd never seen. This was a twenty five year or year storm. And I testified in public meetings um, that the landscape architecture standard, the legal standard, when you get a license is a hundred year storm. And I was told, I think, I hate to throw Jim under the bus, but that a hundred year storm would be managed clearly. You know, they didn't do the due diligence. Um, I sent you all pictures of the hill right after the storm. There was not the protection that they talked about. The top of the hill was getting wrapped up. I thought that was because a month later, we complained about the dust, which was so bad, I thought some of our trees were dead until I washed the dirt off. I thought they were wrapping it up for for wind, you know, dust mitigation, which was something we asked for. We never got a response from the county on that one. Um, that also shows a lot of cracks in all of the homes or doors that don't close. That's my cat being annoying. Uh, excuse him. So um, you know, again, we just don't feel like we're being taken seriously. It's it's scary. I mean, and it's dangerous and it's frustrating, uh, you know. The pictures show how steep it is behind us. We just really like maybe some new mitigations. Um, the new contract, we now don't have a twenty four hour person and I appreciate that no one should have to be at our beck and call twenty four hours a day. On the other hand, when events happen like the storms, they aren't Monday through Friday, nine to five or whatever. Um, the county suggested we call the sheriff, but we're not going to call the sheriff when the, you know, hills falling down. They can't do anything. I um, I don't know. I just have to express my frustration and the fact that um, all these problems were, you know, were predicted years ago. Thanks.
Thanks for your comment. Um, I will next call on Kim Rickett. Please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hi, uh, my name is Kim Rickett and I live at sixteen twenty five Ascension Drive. Um, fortunately not one of the Parrot properties. Um, we are the other neighboring homeowners association. Um, I don't want to repeat too much of what other people have said. Um, basically, the the current grading plan in the winter a year ago was uh, agreed to with promises that best practices would be followed. Um, you've heard about the dust, you've heard about the lack of uh, erosion control measures on the Parrot Hillside. Um, clearly, those are not being followed. Um, and that is of great concern to the neighborhood. Um, I would like to uh, also point out uh, what Mr. Nagel did about the wording. Um, everyone has been very careful to talk about the grading. So we support all of the limited grading that Ms. Long talked about in her um, in her report. Clearly, you need to backfill those walls. Um, however, I noticed everyone dancing around the difference between grading and work. It sounds like um, there is a great deal of work that will happen on the hillside and that has already been approved. And I don't know what can be done about those or if those can be walked back. But in terms of laying utilities, digging trenches for various utilities. Um, on the one hand, we want this to be finished as quickly as possible. On the other hand, if that exposes people on Parrot Drive to additional runoff, um, because in I'm guessing that in order to dig those trenches on that side of the hill, you are going to have to remove erosion control measures. Um, that is unacceptable. Um, I think at this point, uh, the applicant has shown that they are not taking uh, the the storms very seriously. Uh, that storm, I can tell you, I got less water pooling in my yard than I do from some others than I have maybe about the a third of the time or half the time I've lived in this house for twenty years. Um, that was not as bad as it can get. Um, it has gotten much worse because that was the first rain of the season and not rain following continuous rain. Also, we were warned well in advance. There was nothing, the news was for a week was all about how you should be cleaning your gutters and getting your sandbags and getting yourself ready for that storm. So they knew that storm was coming. We knew it was going to be a big storm and yet they really failed on that one. Um, and that makes me very concerned for any work that's going to be performed on the Parrot side of the hill. Um, if the county wants to take its chances, if a sentence slides or runs off, it'll run into the county street. If the Bel Air side runs off, it'll run into the county street. That's the county's problem to deal with. Um, but I feel like no more, that nothing else should be impacting those Parrot homes. They've been through enough already. Um, and finally, I want to uh, talk about uh, the water coming off the hill. I think two things are different than what the hill has looked like historically. That's always been a steep hill running down to the Parrot Homes, but it became steeper because when they uh, made parts of it flat, they had to increase the slope on other parts. Um, in addition, that used to be forest, that used to be complete, complete woodlands, um, including significant oak trees and much underbrush that was removed. Um, so you're going from the difference of a forested slope to a completely denuded slope without um, any protective measures on it. And that's why all of that unusual water and sludge wound up in those in those backyards. Um, and that needs to be corrected, uh, which brings me to my last thing is landscaping. Um, all of the protective measures they've talked about is hydro seeding. Um, hydro seeding of grasses will only get you so far because grassroots are not particularly deep. We haven't heard anything else about the landscaping for stabilization on these slopes um, behind Parrot Drive on Bel Air on Ascension. Um, we don't have a landscaping plan. We don't know when this is happening. I've noticed it has never been mentioned. And yet they're already talking about building homes. It was my understanding that the landscaping should happen before that. If nothing else, not just for aesthetics, but to stabilize these slopes with shrubs and trees and get that going before any homes or anything are built. Um, so I, so that's basically it. I want to make sure that no work, work of any kind, not just grading, is done on the Ascension side so that those homes will be protected with with permanent uh, measures over the winter. And then uh, also I urge the stabilization of slopes with vegetation as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rickett. I will next call on Craig Nishizaki. Please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hi, this is Craig Nishizaki, fourteen seventy four Parrot Drive. Uh, I'll try to be short and not repeat what was already said, but um, the slide that Mr. Toby showed shocked me uh, when he talked about all the excuses for the delays in the project. The only item on there that wasn't talked about, you know, exhaustively for the last ten years. The only item on there that wasn't talked about, you know, exhaustively for the last 10 years was the COVID-19. That that was unanticipated. But everything else was was on that, that the hill did not get more steep. The winds have always been here. There's, there's, you know, all that was predicted. I agree with Mr. Micalucci is, is, yeah, that they knew all this. So now the question is, is again, just repeating what others, why wasn't there more preparation? You know, they were doing a lot of work after October 1st, which was the normal, you know, start of the wet season. And a lot of the, again, repeating what Donald said, a lot of the erosion measures have just been recent. We are backyards. We can see what's going on in the hill. There was, there was no preparation or very little preparation for for a storm. And all the stuff that they showed in the pictures, the most bulk of it was just very, very recent. So again, why, why isn't, why, why wasn't there more preparation? So I really fault the developers for that. On the, on the night of the storm, you know, the neighbor started calling us and complaining about the flooding. So I got on the phone to one of the contractors, one of the developers, and said, hey, you got to get out here. Now, he did say, okay, I was out there in the morning. We looked at it, but there's nothing we could do. It's too wet. And and so, well, you got to do something, you know, because, and they said essentially, oh, no, it, you know, it's everyone's gone home. It's, it's the weekend, can't do anything. So I had to call people from the county. We had to call all over to try to get some, you know, better response. And and talking about the work, the, I think the lawyers, in the appendix, the lawyer's letter probably lays out clearly that there is going to be a lot of work. And I would like the planning commission to, and the planning department to evaluate that work. Let's not just go by the definition of grading. Let's evaluate what's really going to be done and is there a danger to to the neighbors? We, we, we do agree that the necessary grading that has to be done, it should be done. I agree with with those three areas. But I'm not in agreement with all the other work that could cause damage and could change the situation on the hill, the amount of water runoff, everything's different now. And so you've got to be much more prepared, much more diligent. I'm hoping that the county and the planning commission can provide more, more oversight because it's proven that the developer is not very diligent and they're not prepared. Please, please help this neighbor neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. And let's see, the moment I don't see any more hand raised. Chair, that's all we have. You're on mute.
Sorry. Seeing that no additional members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, hope the comment on this item is now closed. And to staff wish to speak on any issues raised, and may I ask, this, the comment about trenching on the hillside for utilities, I'm aware, I mean, here on Airport Street, they're, they're trenching for utilities. This is a level road. And so I would, I would think that any permission to do trenching, if it's on the hillside, should, that's a problem. And then also I have a question about requirements for, I mean, these erosion control measures, are they just supposed to put on jute or silk fences? I know the applicant showed pictures of grass growing. I think that was over on the other side of the hill. Native perennial grasses have exceptionally deep roots for holding a hillside. They could have been sown under that jute netting. Just, and it does sound like the county needs to give some direction. I just, anyway. So can you help with this, his staff?
Yes, absolutely. Just to be clear, the item that's before the commission today is the grading schedule and nothing else. And we agree, construction management is critical, but utility installation is just does not fall under grading. And so it's like erosion control. And we hear loud and clear that the county and the developer need to up our game in erosion control and monitoring. And we take that very seriously and we will do that. And we will ensure that any utility work is done with proper erosion control. And, you know, as the developer indicated, site conditions also are critical. You can't work when it's too wet. That could be more problematic. And so that will limit what can be done when as well. So, you know, I agree with the comments that have been made about the role of landscaping in erosion control. And I'd like to ask Camille and the applicant to address the question of how the timing of the landscaping fits in.
Sure. I agree with that statement as well. And I think landscaping usually comes at the end of the project because underneath those landscaped areas, there's often drainage pipe, drainage facilities that need to be put in. Also, you don't want to damage the landscaping during construction. But I would say that if the Parrot Drive slope that backs up to those homes isn't needed for access or, and there's no utility lines running through that area that it should be landscaped as as soon as possible and at the very minimum seeded like Chair Ketchum was suggesting with perennial grasses.
Okay, so we'll move, move on to Commissioner comments and deliberation. Or if you have questions for staff, we'll start with Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Going back to just what Director Monowitz as well as Camille mentioned, how can we ensure that that, that will, that can be included as part of what the developer needs to continue doing?
So if I think the question is related, is there a way to kind of condition the approval of the grading schedule to require the installation of the landscaping as soon as possible? I think that's a possibility.
If, if yes, is that, can that be done?
I believe so.
Because, right, because, because that's, that's very important for the stability and further issues with, with the land on Parrot Drive site.
Yes, I think we could incorporate a condition that would require that if the commissioners are interested from here in hearing from the applicant about their intention regarding timing of landscaping, it might help assist us to understand the need for the condition or how to structure it.
Okay. Is that all?
Not the other, the other question that I have is, I didn't hear from this, the speakers about whether, whether the developer or their expert is working with the neighbors. I, I, I didn't get a clear picture of that. The Mr. Toby.
I don't think Camille or I know exactly what the interactions have been. I mean, you might want to ask the developer. I mean, Camille, do you want to?
I have some emails. It's mostly Jay Rashawn. That's who's the, I believe he's the superintendent and I don't think he's on this call. But he has been coordinating with the applicants to make appointments, not applicants, the neighbors, to make house visits, basically to examine the the damage and to work with them directly on on repair. So I have an email string to that effect. So that is ongoing.
That I'll agree with. I've been working with Jay and he's been talking to neighbors directly.
Okay. And who, what's the name of the person?
Jay Rashawn.
And, and who is he?
He's the superintendent on the site. So he's the one that was there pretty much every day, 3 o'clock. He's really just the onsite guy who handles problems as they come up. And he works with the mitigation monitors. He's, he's our.
Is he a county person?
No, he's the, he works for Ascension.
Pardon me?
He works for the, the developer.
For the developer. Okay, okay, all right, okay, great. Yeah, so we, we need to, I feel that we need to move ahead with this. But once it's called an emergency repair, I don't think, in my mind, there are two thoughts about it. Yes, we will have to do that. But Mr. Toby, do you want to respond to or how we can make sure that the additional landscaping or erosion control that needs to be done while putting, while doing the other work, trenching and things like that? How can we make sure that nothing happens to the Parrot Home Drives?
Absolutely. So we're, I'm going to be, I'm personally the one who's going to commit to be out there and reviewing a lot of this work that's happening out there. We make recommendations to the contractor at every stretch of the project. So as the project progresses, we're analyzing where are you at today? And we're going to make some additional recommendations. I've, we've already been working with them to put up additional rotational measures along Parrot and we're going to continue to do that. I'm going to, and ultimately the developer is the one who's installing it all, but we're making recommendations to them on a constant basis and reviewing it on a constant basis. And we'll continue to do so.
Okay. Okay, so we'd like to see that happen. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have to.
Commissioner Hanson.
So just to be clear there, what we're approving or not approving today is just the grading work and not the other work. I say had not. Great, thank you. And to avoid situations where things like it's a weekend, you need to call the sheriff and we're going to resolve that how?
Well, so we want to not find ourselves in that position to begin with. I, we have, we understand the need for and we'll continue to up our game in terms of the monitoring and we've made progress in that regard. So we have a new erosion control specialist who's come on board. Finding qualified people to work internally for the department has been challenging. I'm really pleased with the person that's come on board. I believe the new mitigation monitor will be, provide more onsite presence and responsiveness to the concerns of the neighbors. And I believe the developer is committed to addressing some of the issues that have come into. I mean, calling the sheriff at night, that's like, you know, obviously, our erosion control staff and the rest of the staff, we're not in a position to respond. So we just, we don't want to ever face that situation again and we're going to do our best to prevent it.
And there is a contact person for weekends, so.
Yes, I mean, go ahead, Camille, you can.
I would offer that on the weekends, it should be the contractor directly who's monitoring the site especially, you know, before, during and after a rain event. So I would, I would encourage the public to contract, to contact the Jay Rashawn as the point person and he can direct his people from there. But as far as, you know, eight to five on weekdays, it would be the mitigation contacts that I had shown on my slide and also given to the interested parties. And we will address it as soon as we can when we get back to the office. I had suggested the sheriff, just in terms of condition compliance in general. If there's not, not so much for erosion, I don't think that there's much that they can do about that. But if there's any, you know, concerns about noise or what have you, I mean, that's, that's typically our response. But I would say even in those instances, it's best to go to the contractor. They have, they have been responsive to the neighbors and they have taken a direct approach in communicating with them to resolve their concerns. And we'll continue to monitor the adequacy of their responses to the neighbors.
And if I may, Chair Ketchum and Commissioner Hanson, I'd like to go back to my response to your initial question about what you are approving because it's, it's correct. The, the item that's before you is the grading schedule only. That's the realm of your jurisdiction. That doesn't mean the stuff that is outside of your jurisdiction can't continue to take place. So I don't want the audience to be confused that, well, we say all you're approving is the grading schedule to think that other things that are not regulated under the grading ordinance can continue because those things can continue. The issue is that they need to be done properly and both the county staff and the developer are committed to ensuring that happens. So just want to be clear on that point.
Thank you. So I do think the grading repairs are necessary and urgent. I'm done with my comments.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Okay, I know the grading schedule is the topic of the discussion right now. But Camille, can you, if possible, indulge me in putting the schedule for the grading? Because it looks like we're going to do, we're just about to approve or disapprove a significant amount of work during rainy season, right? And so we hear from the neighborhood that there is, there's a strong concern, even though it's not related to the approval of the topic of this meeting, all the concern that they have in relation to previous approval of the rainy season, the schedule. So personally, I don't want to approve a significant amount of work during rainy season if we're not gonna hold the, 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 the project responsible for the inadequacies or inconsistencies on the, on the, on the condition of approval of, of the project, right? So even though it's not part of the topic, for me personally, I would like to approve it if they're not following the conditions of approval. Like in the past, I remember there was a, a promise that there will be county personnel and there will be enough signage in case there is a problem. They can call, the neighbor can call, but it looks like that had not been the case. So I want, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the situation and the fact that they have some erosion control, the work that can be done concurrently with the, with the retaining walls and the slope repairs that has not been done. And, 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 you know, that's something of concern to me. Now, going back to the, to the schedule, can you explain, Camille, please?
So it's a very limited amount of grading, like we had discussed, that's being done during the wet season. It's just slope repair and the retaining walls. So I don't, this, this is a lot of information on this schedule, but essentially all other grading will take place after April 30th. So.
So the rainy season is between now, between now and April 30.
That's correct.
The applicant is requesting to allow slope repair and retaining wall.
That's it. Yes. And that within five to seven weeks, ideally, maybe some delays due to weather and wind. But, but hopefully before the rain really gets going late in the season.
Okay.
And as far as the mitigation monitoring, we have heard some, some concerns with the past mitigation monitor in terms of their responsiveness and reliability. And that was one of the reasons why we did change the mitigation monitor. And we have worked with this mitigation monitor in particular, SWCA, the new one, for a project in the San Mateo Highlands. And they have proven themselves extremely responsive and diligent and communicative, especially with county staff.
Yeah, that would be something very interesting that, that to have this information handy for the neighbor in case there is a problem they wanted to, 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 to bring up to the attention. I couldn't imagine my house backyard is being flooded and then hear from the county that there's nothing they can do about it. That, that's totally frustrating. And the second speaker that we have expressed the level of frustration that she sees with the county. And the second speaker that we have um, expressed the level of frustration that she sees with the county. And that's uh, sort of like um, sad to hear that. So we needed to have. Some sort of like information or contact information, phone numbers that the neighborhood. Will be able to call in case there is an emergency like that. Um, as part of the condition of approval, which is very significant.
Yes, I I do believe that the um, contractor's information and uh, the mitigation monitors information are posted at the site. And I and I hope that they have been updated, um, as we have requested that uh, a few weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, but Camille, we need to have somebody uh, that has more level of responsibility rather than saying. Oh, no, it's busy, you have to wait until the weekday, because this weekend, when you see the backyard of your house being flooded. Uh, that's totally frustrating.
Yeah, well, the best love, the best, honestly, the best avenue is to go straight to the contractor. Um, during the off times, I mean, we simply, we're not gonna, you know, we have lives outside of our jobs and um. The mitigation monitor's not gonna pick up the phone at two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, so then, yeah, allow that to happen as a part of the condition, because um. When you own a house and your house is being flooded, you don't care whose life is outside of work or you have a life or not. I want my business to take care of.
Right, and the quickest, the most.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Okay.
Um, as a county, uh, uh, as an, as a citizen that we pay taxes. We don't care if a county employee had life beside work or something, you know what I mean? It it not, don't take my personal, my contact personal, my my common personal. But it's frustrating, and as a citizen, we face this not only for uh, planning staffing, but other county level. And we need to make sure that if we approve a project. That uh, we have that information handy for people who may be directly affected. That's that's my concern, not not personally directed to you, but in general. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I um, I understand the scope of our motion uh, today, and I'm in favor of that, but just to um. I know s- somebody suggested the idea of incorporating a landscape addition in today's motion. I don't know if that's the answer, but, and it's not really landscaping, the way I look at this is um, like the, the applicant showed the picture of. I assume it was the other side of the hill where they had the uh. The jute netting and they had hydro seeded, and you could see the grass growing up through that. And they said that they had done that early and water irrigated it, so it started growing before the rains, and yes. And why wasn't that done on the Parrot Street side? And what about the area that the neighbors are saying doesn't even have the jute netting? So I guess um, motion aside, I would just ask county staff to. Um. First of all. Uh, make sure that that Parrot Hill side, the whole area above the homes that's been graded, has. Has their, the erosion control and and hydro seed it to put that in at the same time. I'm not talking about shrubbery here, we're just talking about get some. Growing some roots in the ground, uh, and that would be my request. Uh, so now just to, does anybody else have any comments, or are we ready for a motion? Okay, may we have a motion?
And Camille, put the recommended motion forward. Okay. I'm willing to say. Let's see. That the planning commission recommends approval of the schedule of grading operations and requests for. Wet season slope repair and retaining wall backfill. Of the retain, of the proposed retaining walls.
I second. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Nay.
Commissioner Hanson?
I.
Chair Ketchum?
I.
Thank you.
Uh, motion passes three, two, one, with Commissioner Santa Cruz opposed. Uh, thank you all, members of the community and everybody, um, it's a tough item. Moving on now to the director's portion of the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Um, I have no correspondence to report. All the correspondence that came in was specific to the Ascension Heights item we just heard, so. Um, with regard to our next meeting, we have one item on the agenda. It is the continuation of. The coastal permit design review variance and non-conforming use permit for a new single-family residence on Ocean Boulevard. In Moss Beach that was previously considered in in September, and is now being brought. Back forward for year, for the consideration. Um, you know, I I want, getting to the director's report, um, just acknowledging, we're now in the winter season. And we've seen um, the most amount of rain I've seen in October since I've lived here. Um, I just wanted to reiterate our intent to really um. Ensure that we are doing an appropriate job of monitoring our construction sites during the winter seasons, and uh, I I am very pleased with. The uh, personnel we've been able to add, and we'll uh, continue to build that team to make sure that we. Protect water quality and people's properties. So a couple updates for uh, the commission. As some of you may know, um, the Board of Supervisors, uh, or I should say. The Department of Parks, uh, County Parks has been. Working with a committee looking at our rules around uh, off-leash dogs in county parks and. Um, based on uh, a few years of deliberation and working with the community. The Parks Department made a proposal to undertake a pilot project. Under which um, certain count, areas of county parks would be accessible to people and their dogs. Off-leash. Um, the Board of Supervisors considered whether or not to endorse the pursuit of that. Project yesterday and um, voted in favor of that, which means that now. For the parks that are within the coastal zone, uh, this represents a, a change in use. That requires a coastal development permit, and that coastal development permit will be coming forward to. The Planning Commission in the near future, so. Prepare yourself for a significant debate about um, dogs in our life and in our parks. So um, it will sure to be an interesting conversation. Two other uh, matters, uh, the uh, final draft, public review draft of. Connect the Coastside has been released and will be presented to the Midcoast Community Council tonight. And so I think that uh, should be available online, and in case you'd like to tune in, I think that will be a good discussion. And then um. Also, yesterday at the Board of Supervisors meeting, the board um, adopted a resolution in support of a grant. Application that the county has submitted to the San Mateo County uh, Transportation Authority. Uh, the Transportation Authority was created for the purposes of collecting and distributing. A certain amount of tax increment towards um, improving our highways and roads. And so the county applied for a grant to um, continue uh, to fund the work. We have initiated with Caltrans um, towards implementing some of the projects included in Connect the Coastside. In particular, the Moss Beach area from Cypress Avenue all the way up to Sixteenth. And so um. I'm hopeful that uh, the grant will be awarded and we can take uh, the next step in working with Caltrans to. Make those needed improvements a reality. So that concludes my update, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Steve?
I've got a question for anybody, it's not specifically a planning question. On the coast side, at the end of Kelly Avenue and Half Moon Bay, there is a foundation that is crescent shape. Does anybody know what structure building was there?
So I I'm pretty familiar with that site, and you, as you get to the end, there's the Ranger Station. Towards the bluff on the left of the parking lot. Um, where I, where in particular is the? Foundation that you're speaking of?
Part of the foundation has fallen off the cliff edge, so it's right at the edge. It's on the south side of Kelly. There's piers within the foundation, and it's crescent shape. I can't imagine what a structure would look like there.
Chair Ketchum, do you have any idea?
I I don't know, there's concrete foundations falling onto the beach all up and down the coast side, and this particular one, I don't know.
Yep, if you take, look at Google Earth or something, and you could see. Beautiful crescent.
The um, so this is on State Parks land? Near enough to the Ranger Station.
Undeveloped land at the moment.
On what man?
Undeveloped land, I don't.
What I mean, State Parks owns the upland all along the the coast down to Kelly. From from Yarmar down to Kelly, so is it south of Kelly or?
Kelly.
Oh, well, I don't know who owns that. Cause State Parks would know the, the answer too, cause they acquired that coastline north of Kelly. What is in the fifties or something, so they would know. Oh, I have a question, if we're done with that one. I have a question, I missed uh, when you were, Steve, when you were talking about the next meeting, is our next meeting on November twenty fourth or December eighth?
Oh, I I I apologize, I think I might have skipped over. Um, oh, I I mentioned the item we'll be having. I didn't mention the date, it is uh, November twenty fourth. So hopefully that's not a problem for the commission, that's the day before Thanksgiving. I know that um, in that, in this case, the applicant whose item was continued from September is of course anxious to try and get. Final decision, so if we are able to meet, um, we we'd like to uh, proceed.
I I will not be there for that meeting.
I will not be there either. I have plans uh, to travel outside of the country from the twenty to the, to the first.
I'll be in Oregon, but I could in the morning uh, log in.
I could be there.
That would only leave Ramirez to see if he's. Available.
So at the moment, is there anything planned for Ocean, for December eighth?
I don't have any agenda requests of, as of now, but um, I I believe we are gonna have a meeting.
So the, um, any idea how long it'll be before the dog, uh, off-leash dog project comes to us?
Well, based on the um, my communications with the planner who's working on it, I I believe it's gonna be. In sometime in the next year, it won't be before the new year.
Okay.
That that's, that's my hunch, I will look into it, and I'll be prepared to update you at the next meeting if. If we have one, which uh, thanks to Janet for checking in with Commissioner Ramirez.
I have another question about the tree ordinance update on what is the latest timeline for that?
Sure, um, so as you know, Melissa Ross took over Joe Leclerc's position as the planning manager. And so, uh, you know, it's been a difficult transition for her. Um, I I think she's doing a great job. It's just there's so many items to cover, it's difficult for one person. Um, so she is um. Really digging into that at the moment, and working very closely with the county arborist. Um, and uh, you know, they're not starting from scratch. Uh, to the contrary. They have a huge document representing all the work that's been done by the subcommittee. And by Joe and his team in creating a draft. And what we've concluded in going over that body of work is that. You know, we like to keep our ordinances and regulations clean and straightforward. And what happened in the process of developing these ordinances is we got a lot of great information. That's very detailed, that is really good guidance, but doesn't particularly fit well. In the way we structure our ordinances and regulations, so what we're trying to do is break it apart. Where we have a very clear, specific ordinance, and then we have guidelines and best management practices. That fit particular situations that accompany the ordinance, and that body of work can be updated as the science progresses and so forth. So they're in the process of completing that reorganization and preparing a. A draft that the department can feel proud about putting out for uh, you know, last round of public reviews. And I expect that to will um, be released in the next calendar year. Hopefully soon, within the next calendar year, um, but I can't say exactly which month.
Chair Forward. Thank you, and just a detailed question, does the. Significant tree removal fee currently apply per tree or per permit?
Um, it is per permit, but if you look at the fee schedule, um, I I believe it groups so many. Numbers, I I I I have to go look to know for sure.
Two trees, for example, for two trees, would you pay just one fee or double?
I I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. If it was a violation, you're coming in after the fact. You you would be penalized more for two than one, but yeah, um, I I think it's per tree. And that two would cost more than one, but I I need to confirm.
I I've been getting, the reason I ask is because my uh, coast sider have been reaching out to me, uh, and. Um. As though I were in charge of this. I don't uh, uh, right.
It it should be a pretty straightforward and simple answer for me to get, so how about I'll email you the answer after the meeting?
That would be good, yeah, I think at the moment, he, he's just been contacting the generic planning department. Email address, and um, maybe there's misunderstanding, I don't know. But um, thank you, and uh.
Yes, and I'll always feel free to direct, if you guys get inquiries from the public that you want staff to answer, just send them our way.
Well, actually, this, this gentleman did send a, send his emails to the planning commission. But um, he also sent it to me personally, and I'm aware that that email, those emails were not distributed to the planning commissioners. Probably because it's not, it didn't seem appropriate, but um.
Okay, um, well, I I'll certainly look into it and get back to you with the answer.
Okay, thank you. So do any other commissioners have comments or questions?
I found a picture.
What did you find? Oh, is this, you're emailing it to me, cause I don't know.
I I'm, Mr. Hanson, I'm diligently researching uh, all I can find to figure out what it is, because now I'm confused. It has a bunch of piers in a radial pattern, and it's bizarre.
It looks like there's um, you know, cuts in the corn crops that the alien spaceship.
There's, there's this historical society in Half Moon Bay, I mean, somebody from Half Moon Bay would be the, the, I'm sure somebody knows.
Well, I figured the brain test here had such experience with oddities, so.
Oh.
We would all know somewhere, some piece of it. Thank you, though.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Is that a finger or a no? Oh, okay. See no further business, uh, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.